To call the meeting to order. And Rob will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Paul, there you go. I think Paul's got a flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Rob. So now is the time when we would review, revise, or approve the agenda and approve the agenda. Do any trustees have any requests for revisions to the agenda, the order that we do things, or to pull anything off the consent agenda? They see none. The agenda is approved. Agenda item four, we approve the minutes from the previous meetings, starting with the December 13th, 2021, special meeting on page four. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting on page four? Move by trustee of Gears. Second by trustee Havens. Are there any changes or additions to the minutes? And do we take public comment here, Rob?
Not, not on the minutes.
Seeing none, all trustees in favor of the minutes of the special board meeting from December 13th, please raise your hand. I guess, Jen, how are you?
Well, I wasn't there. Do I still get to?
No, you know, I think it's better if you don't vote. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Okay, thanks. That's unanimous, just all trustees that are present at the meeting. The next is for the board trustees' regular board meeting on December 14th, beginning on page five of your packet. Do we have any changes or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from December 14th? Move by trustee of Gears, second by trustee Walker Andrews. Any discussion? All trustees in favor of approving the minutes from the December 14th meeting, please signify by raising your hand. That is unanimous, as all trustees present at the meeting, are present tonight. The minutes for the meeting on January 11th, 2022, are beginning on page nine of your packet. Any comments on the minutes? Any changes? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from January 11th? Move by trustee Walker Andrews, second by trustee old person. Any board comment? Seeing none, all trustees in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by raising your hand. That is unanimous, as all trustees present, I think. Trustee of Gears.
I wasn't there.
You weren't there. Okay, thank you. I think that is a correct way to do it. I appreciate people catching that for me. So then, agenda item five A is public comment regarding non-agenda items. And if we have public comment, Paul will manage the traffic there. The rules for public comment include no mentioning of anyone's name or infringing on the rights of privacy of others, and must keep the comments to below three minutes. Paul, do we have any comments?
Yes, we have, um, this, Keith, K-E-F-E. Please go ahead and speak your name and spell it, and give us your three-minute public comment.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, okay. You don't have to see me, right?
Correct.
That's enough. All right, perfect. Yeah, my name is Maura Keefe. I'm an actress, writer, producer, and lunchtime noon assistant at Paxton School. I took the job 16 months ago at the beginning of, sort of, no, in the middle of the pandemic, as I like to call it. I wanted to volunteer at Paxton and was told that I was too old. But I got a call a few days later saying that they needed a noontime assistant. So I decided that I would go for it because I thought it would be fun. And yeah, I enjoy kids and give me focus to my useless pandemic days. So I started there, and within a week, it became apparent to me how much food waste was going on throughout the school that I worked at. And I and some other teachers then started encouraging the children to go ahead and take their broccoli, carrots, apples, things that they didn't eat home. And then we went ahead and went to the next phase when they were all in the cafeteria in January. And I was confronted and told that I couldn't do that or take the other food to the POV anonymously. And that if I did that again, I would be reported to OPI, which I had no idea what OPI stood for. And I wondered if it stood for Office of Public Idiots. I mean, I was just curious. Anyway, turns out that I ended up finding out that we were able to return the oranges, the milks, the juices, to be kind of wiped down and put back in the refrigerators and re-served. And then that didn't go according to plan. And so then there was over 100 bags of broccoli a day that were being thrown out. So I started a composting program because I felt like if they couldn't at least, you know, go ahead with the broccolis and the other kind of stuff, that they should be able to at least compost it. So I went out and bought a composting bin and started using that. And then I got kickback, or whatever you want to call it, from composting. And then the year was over, and I started back in September. And I went ahead and composted up. I am now paying Missoula Composting to come and pick up the bin once a week. And they're still not taking back the oranges and the milks and the juices and wiping them down and putting them back. They're going into the garbage. So I just have a big problem with the amount of waste that's going on and what could happen. There's also, I don't know if you are aware of the Zero Waste Program that's been started. Oh, my time's up. It says my time is up.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We really appreciate your comments, and we can't respond, but we heard everything you said. Paul, are there any other public comments?
No, no other hands are raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. And then the item 5B is correspondence, which is in our packet, beginning on page 10. And I believe Tracy sent us an additional group in the email. Item six A is student trustee reports, and this is our second meeting of the month, so I don't believe we have those. Is that right, Rob?
Yes, I don't see any of the student trustees on the trustee reports I have. The written ones are from last meeting, so no longer up to date.
Okay, thanks. We'll catch those the first meeting in February. And then 6B, the Health Insurance Trust Fund, it's in your packet, beginning on page 35. The high school activities report for the fall is on page 36. And there will be no oral report on that, but you can look at it. And if you have questions, you can talk to Dr. Watson about your questions on high school activities. Six D, that would be announcements from Dr. Watson.
Thank you, Chair Lorenzen. I just also wanted to let you know that trustee Wake is trying to get in, so I resent her the link. Maybe Paul, Paul, if I send you her phone number, maybe you could give her a call.
Absolutely.
Is Annalise a student trustee?
Yes.
Yes, I am.
Okay, Annalise, I think Chair Lorenzen wanted you to give a report if you'd like to.
Yes, I'm the student trustee from Big Sky High School. And here's our student report. A few weeks ago, Big Sky students were asked to fill out a survey asking questions about their experience. Administration plans to take the 450 responses and run focus groups to dive deeper into the data and to make continuous improvements. Next semester, we are also going to pilot a program called E-Hall Pass. This will help us become more intentional when students are in the hallways and help reinforce expectations. Finals week was last week. Even though Big Sky was remote for two days, students did a great job engaging online with their teachers. We also had an intervention day Friday where students could come into the building and meet with their teachers to receive support. Big Sky also extended the grading date to give students who have been out sick extra time to finish work for semester one. Our counselors will start going into the classroom in mid-February to start helping ninth through 11th grade students request courses for the next school year. We are excited to be offering a few new classes such as entrepreneurship, medical terminology, public health, and world issues. Big Sky's speech and debate continues to shine. Last weekend, we took a small group to Butte to compete and left with Eric Armstrong taking seventh in informative, Abby Dornell taking third in Lincoln Douglas Debate, and Will Rosansky taking first in Lincoln Douglas Debate. We couldn't be more proud of our speech and debate team, who will travel to Speech and Debate State in Helena January 28th and 29th. Big Sky has implemented the MHSA/Stockman Bank Local Recognition Sportsmanship Program. Three people are chosen prior to our Boys and Girls varsity basketball games to choose a player from each team who demonstrates a combination of the following characteristics. Treats opponents with respect, takes pride in his or her school, respects officials, exhibits grade and victory and dignity and defeat, has pride in his or her performance, cooperates with coaches and peers, displays positivity at all times, proudly represents the community, and enjoys the activity while promoting and enjoying for others. MHSA/Stockman Bank provides a medal to be presented at the conclusion of the game to the athletes. This program involves the Eagle Code. Big Sky Athletics can be more proud of our student athletes, coaching staff, and parent and school community support. Come out and support Big Sky Eagles. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Annalise. Are there other student trustees on the call? If you are, can you raise your virtual hand?
No hands available.
Okay, for my superintendent report, I have a couple of things I wanted to chat about. One is the COVID numbers. As we switched over to a new semester, we started a new spreadsheet, so I just want to make sure the board is aware of that. We have this available on our website under our COVID link. Hopefully, you can see that. Everyone see that, okay? Yes, okay. So this is the start of the second semester. On the left-hand side over here, we did keep the numbers from first semester, and we still have the first semester spreadsheet up in case people want to see that. But we found it easier because it tends to get really, really long if we just keep going down week after week with cases. So that's why we started one for a new semester. One thing that's changed that in the last few weeks since we came back from break, we're now, we're now tracking the cases every day at 4:00. Tyler Christensen, our communications specialist, puts these numbers in at 4:00 every day. So that 124 is as of 4:00 today. And so that is the cases for this week so far. And when I say this week, we start tracking those as of Saturday. So any cases that are reported to us on Saturday, Sunday, Monday, or Tuesday would be right there. You can look back and see how it's been going the last few weeks. Obviously, some pretty big numbers, things we haven't really experienced before. It's definitely taxing our system a little bit in terms of just a number of absences. The other thing that I wanted to mention, part two of my report, is we do track also every day. We track student attendance, and we track staff members that are out due to illness or for another reason. And when, when we start getting close to 20% out with regards to staff members, then we, we start to get a little bit concerned about operations for the particular school. We obviously supplement any way we can. We have central office staff that can go in and help. We've got folks from other schools that can help. But there is a certain point when we've got too many staff out that it really significantly impacts operations. And we may look at a short-term closure like we did with Big Sky last week. So I do want the board to know that we're using a couple of metrics to do that. One of them is the number of staff that are out, and then the other one is the number of students that are out not attending school. So we look at that multiple times a day. The staff numbers, we look at 3:00, 6:00, and then 6:30 the next morning. And our team's doing really well, kind of holding it together. But our staff is getting pretty tired in terms of just supporting each other and filling in for each other. So it is a little bit taxing on our staff right now. And we're hoping that the community numbers start to slow down a little bit because what we've noticed in the past is, once the community numbers go down, then our district numbers usually go down, and we end up not having as many staffing problems. So that's my report, my superintendent report. I just wanted to make sure that board knew that this was available on our website, and you can track that daily at 4:00 each day is when we post the new numbers, and then we add them up at the end of the week. That's end of report.
Trustee Walker Andrews, do you have a question?
I think you're on mute, trustee Walker Andrews.
Sorry. I was looking at the numbers, and in one school, it went something like 20 and then 170, like the next day, 132 the next day. That's, that's real. It wasn't like you didn't count them one day, but it was just one day.
No, not exactly. So let me explain that the numbers are coming in to each school. Sometimes they come into the building, secretary that routes them to the nurse. Each school is managing that just a little bit differently. And so that particular school had been sitting on a bunch of cases and hadn't, hadn't entered them in yet. So even though it looked like we had a large number on one given day, they were actually had been several days before that, but the school hadn't put them in the, in the proper spreadsheet. So they put them all in on one day, so we had to record them for that, that day.
Trustee of Gears.
So just so I make sure I'm looking at those numbers clear. In the month of, the first three weeks of January, since we have about 10,000 students and 3,000 staff, somewhere around 8% of our MCPS community was tested positive. Is that right?
Let's about 1,000. I have not done the math, but I would take your word for it. That first week of January, we were 134, then 325, and then 526. Those are separate cases. Those are all individual cases, either students or staff.
My goodness.
I do want, I do want to note, too, that, you know, we were doing a lot of testing through our, our means. We have tests available at the building level. In several cases, we have tests available through the district. We have a testing site where folks can come. So we are doing a lot of testing, but there's, we're also finding a lot of home testing. And so when somebody calls in and said they tested positive at home, we do record that as a positive case. Some other districts are not doing that. Some other districts are choosing only to record the, the lab positive cases. But we're, we are recording those home cases. We also encourage the home cases to call the health department because you're supposed to record that with the health department when you do a home test.
Okay, are there any other questions for Dr. Watson? Okay, thank you very much. And I see Vicky, trustee McDonald has joined us. She's elevated to our screen. Item seven on the agenda is the consent agenda. These are routine items that we usually don't discuss. We simply acknowledge, the first one is to ratify out of district attendance agreements. We have one, which is elementary. So do we have a motion from an elementary trustee to approve the attendance agreement as shown on page 38? Move by trustee of Gears, second by trustee old person. All trust, elementary trustees in favor, please signify by raising your hand. And that is unanimous, as the elementary trustees present. I think you're hopping around. And then seven, seven, the next one is approved revenue and expenditure reports, and that's a full board item. And those are on page 39. The administration recommendation, I guess we'll vote separately. So the elementary recommendation, the administration recommends that trustees approve the attached elementary revenue and expenditure report. You have a motion from an elementary trustee. Move by trustee of Gears, second by trustee old person. All elementary trustees in favor, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous, as all elementary trustees present. And the next one is a full board item, secondary recommendation. Administration recommends that trustees approve the attached high school revenue and expenditure reports. Do we have a motion? Move by trustee Gail. Second by trustee Walker Andrews. All trustees in favor of approving the secondary administration reports, please signify by raising your hand.
This is Ann, yes.
Thank you. And that's unanimous, as all trustees present. Then we move on to agenda item eight, new business. The first one is finance and operations, the budget and election calendar presented by Pat McHugh.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? All right, so the page 43 has the budget election and, excuse me, the election and budget calendar. And, and up at the top of that page, there are some notable dates that are related to the statutory deadlines. And I'll just point out a few. There's a deadline of, of March 24th for candidate filing. March 31st is a deadline for candidates to withdraw, and deadline for write-in candidates. And then April 1st is a certification of ballots, both for trustee elections and levy elections. And this is also the date by which notice can be made to cancel elections with the election date on May, May 3rd. The, the other information here is delineating within which board meetings we'll be talking about certain items. And, and next board meeting, we'll, we'll have a deeper conversation about the election when we, when we ask the, the board to, to call for the election. And, and then we look further at the potential levy elections for the operating budget. So an operating levy in both the elementary and the high school, which we'll briefly touch upon tonight. So really, this is information-only item. It's just trying to give, give the board a heads-up of what's, what's coming with respect to, to those election dates and how, how they work within our, our board calendar. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for Pat? Okay, seeing none about this calendar. Our next agenda item is the fiscal year '23 budget projections, again with Pat.
All right, so this is another look at our budget projections for next year, for FY '23. Those budgets are built based upon our October enrollment count of, of this fiscal year of, of 2021, along with our February 2022 enrollment count, which will take place here in the first week of February. And so this projection is based upon estimates of our February enrollment count. And what we did is just look at historically how our numbers compared between October and February counts and use that same ratio to predict what the enrollment would look like in February. Obviously, there'll be changes when we complete the actual enrollment count. But based upon our estimates, here's what we're anticipating in terms of, of budgets. So you look at the top on page 45, the spreadsheet is broken down, elementary and high school, separate columns for each. The highest budget without a vote is statutorily calculated based upon our projected enrollment numbers. The overbase levy would be the amount of levy that we could ask for. This is the, the most we could ask for in order to get to the, to that highest budget amount, which is, which is reflect, reflected on the line proposed adopted budget. This is very much a calculation for us using the statutory formula. Based upon those numbers, we compare to prior year budget, actually this year's budget, and we look at the potential increase. And, and very notable, you'll see the, the high school increase is, is quite significant, especially for those of you who have been here a while, compared to where the high school's been at in, in recent years. So, so very much related to that bump in enrollment that we were anticipating happening in the high school. It's probably still muted a little bit because of some of the, some of the drop in enrollment that we, along with other districts around the country, experienced following COVID. But so with these reasonable increases, we're just anticipating and, and showing a summary of potential budgetary impact. And you'll see there's some retiree savings that we, we annually recognize. That number will be adjusted. We're just anticipating a similar number of retirees and how that will, would, would relate to our general fund budget. And again, this is just the general fund. Then we look at very early estimates of, of salary obligations that, that might come into play and just estimating what that might look like. And, and finally, under anticipated obligations, we're looking at, at known other expenditures that were, were needing to build into the budget. And the, the only one I'll really highlight is that SRR funds used as expense expenditure offset for FY '22. This was the funds that we identified when, when the board adopted budgets last August as the funds that we would utilize to help us balance. And unless we utilize or have available those funds every year, we need to count that as a cost because we need to build that obligation into our budget. That's why it appears there. We'll take a closer look at the actual amount that we use to help us balance. But you'll be seeing that number appear throughout the budget planning process. And then finally, you can, there's some blank space, but some, some descriptors there for, for substitutes, utilities, custodial supplies, elevator maintenance. These are expenditures that, that we know we've been over-expended in our budgets for, for a number of years and just trying to kind of put those on the table as possible, placeholders for, for budget adds. So with that, that's, that's our early look at our budget projections based upon the, the statutory inflationary increase and our estimated enrollments. And we'll have another round of numbers next budget, or next board meeting when we, after we have our enrollment count. So this won't be the first or the last time you, this won't be the last time you see these, this, this spreadsheet.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions.
Trustee Decker.
Thanks. I'm just curious about the SRR funding, the actual expenses that are showing up there in that $2 million like deficit or gap that needs to be made up. Those are actually people, right? And so I'm wondering if those salary line items are also showing up up in the salary obligations somewhere? Or if that's something that we should just be putting up there to make it clear that that's what, that it's people that we are supporting in the district that are, that are what that $2 million SRR expenditure really reflects? And that decisions about maintaining that is really going to be decisions about maintaining those new positions and things? Is that, am I getting that right?
Yeah, I, I see exactly what you're saying. And I guess when I look at the, and we can do that. I mean, it, we can move it up in that area. It has the same effect where you're, it's, it's more a question of comparing this current year to next year. And we know that we're going to fund obligations with these, with these one-time-only funds. And so whether it's, and it is staffing, but whether it's staffing or utilities or other supply costs doesn't matter as much as the fact that we need to figure out how much of those SRR funds we use to help balance and then ensure that we either allocate that much SRR funds to keep, to keep going or that we pull those positions back into the budget. The positions that are here are really ongoing positions. These aren't positions that were funded with SRR funds to meet the SRR need. These are just positions to maintain staffing. So I think there's a distinction between the, the, the two uses of SRR funds. The, the SRR funds that Rob reported on his report were, or the, the staffing that was added with those SRR funds are not the same ones here. So this is a carve-out to help us pay for positions that were already in play, were already existing in the budget.
Okay, I'm sorry. Can I just ask one more kind of clarification around that, Ben? What I'm, what I'm understanding is that we used SRR funding to also offset some budget shortfall. What I'm, what I'm understanding is that we used S R funding to also offset some budget shortfall that was due to like reduced enrollment and, and a lot of that. Also, of course, other things too, like the M O A, I know, I know we're spending S R on a lot of different things. But I just want to, like, knowing that some of those decisions that may come before us at some point about what is truly going to be pandemic-related like response that, that has a timeframe versus changes that we've made that we want very much to continue or that we may need to make hard decisions about. Like, I, I just want to be really transparent about all of that as we think about how things are, are landing and if we're offsetting expenses that we had before the pandemic with S R because we didn't have the money? Or if we've now done some things and we're paying for that with S R and we may want to continue and we need to find another way? Like, those are, they're all really important things to consider and it's confusing enough that I think we need to just be as totally transparent about how that's working as possible.
Yeah, totally, and I think it's two things you're talking about. One is the additional staffing that was added in response to COVID, S R funded, and that sits over here, if you will. And then retaining staff and it is sitting here in the general fund where we have a three hundred and thirty student drop in, in students and we are retaining staff to, to retain that budget, which sits over here. And it's the same funds, it's the same funds, but, but one is about what, as you said, what do you keep, what do you value in terms of that S R budget? And the other is what, what's the, the board willing to do in terms of continuing S R support to keep the general fund in the same operational state? Because it's really the, those other positions exist in Fund Fifteen, they exist in a different place. These positions are all general fund paid positions, they're just being paid for with a different source of funds, if that helps.
Trustee Walker Andrews, did you have a question?
Basically, I was wondering, her question answered it.
Okay.
It was a part of that, yeah.
Do we have other questions? I have a question, Pat, if, would the inter-local agreement have a role in budgeting, in balancing these budgets? And how might that work at the inter-local fund?
Yeah, it's a great question. So we've, we've relied upon the inter-local fund in the past to help the two districts balance. And, and usually, the elementary is, has had additional funds that we've set aside to, to, to balance the, the high school. And I think historically, even though on paper, the high school is, or the elementary is showing this inter-local support for the, for the high school, we've never actually had to use the funds, it just helps us balance on paper. So yes, that is a possibility and it, it is possible it would work the other direction for probably the first time and since we've had an inter-local flexibility or opportunity where the high school would be, would be helping the elementary out. But it's a possibility.
Okay, thanks, any other trustee questions for Pat on that? Okay, then we'll go to the next item, which is the technology fund update.
Yeah, thanks, so page forty-six, just looking at the elementary tech fund and, and our levy in the tech fund is right there on the top, under the budget column, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. And then it's budgeted, as you see down below, under expenses on that, that left column. You can see the expenditures under that column, that's year-to-date through twelve thirty-one, that's what we've expended. And the encumbrances that have adjusted those expenditures or are in addition to those that haven't been completed. And then our, our balances. So just a second quarter look at where we're at and, and we're, we're looking real good in the tech fund.
Okay, are there any questions for Pat about the tech fund? And this is elementary, there's a high school one as well, right?
There's a high school one next, yeah, that's just the elementary.
Okay.
Should I jump to the high school?
I think so, I don't see any questions.
High school, similar, it's a, it's a different levy, it's seven hundred and fifty thousand annually. And then similarly, you'll see the expenditures, the primary expenditure, both elementary and high school is, is equipment. It's technology equipment, it's devices, it's access points, it's it's any of the equipment that is affiliated or associated with operating our, our technology in the schools. Both in the classroom and in the operation side.
Okay, I see trustee McDonald has a hand up. Do you have a question about that, Vicki? No, hand down, are there any other questions for Pat about the technology fund? Okay, see none, then we have the transportation fund update.
Yeah, so the elementary is on page forty-eight. And again, you can look at where the, the levy is at under the elementary budget column. And, and really what's interesting is you can see how the county and state reimbursement matches each other, that's statutory. And you can also see how small it is in relationship to the overall budget. So it's a, it's not a huge piece to that puzzle. Then the total revenue represents our levy plus those reimbursements and our fund balance that we re-appropriated to operate. Our expenditures, the salaries are, represent a portion of our principal salaries that are, that, that we associate with operating transportation and dealing with, with bus, bus issues in the schools. And then transportation, under that five X X object code, that's our contract. So that represents our budget for a transportation contract for to and from school only. There's, that's, that's all I have there.
So it doesn't include activities then?
No, activities, right, activities are in the general fund.
Okay, are there any questions about the transportation fund from any of the trustees? I guess I had in my head that we, that our high school transportation costs were higher than elementary, but I see that's not the case, is it?
It's not, right, it's, even though the high school is a bigger area, it, it's got to represent all the kids driving to school in the county. There's a lot more routes on the high school side and, and, yeah, you can see that with that budget, that's, that's a good way to look at that.
I mean, on the elementary side, there's a lot more routes?
A lot more routes in the elementary side, right.
Okay, okay, is there any more questions about transportation? Okay, the next agenda item is eight, A V, which is the district organizational structure with Dr. Watson.
Dr. Watson, you're muted.
Sorry, I was saying some great stuff there, sorry about that. Hopefully, you can see that chart on the screen, it's also on page fifty of your agenda. One thing I just wanted to point out to the board, this is an information-only item, I'm looking for some feedback from the board as we work through this. This is a draft and, you know, I'll bring it back to a future meeting once we have some more feedback on it. But this is, the reason it comes before you is it's part of our policy manual. So policy sixty-one thirty basically allows the superintendent to, to change some of the assignments in the, in the district structure, but it's subject to the approval of the trustees. So that's why this comes before you. The last time this came before you was in February of twenty-twenty, right before COVID shut down. But we, we had this reorganization before the board at that time. When I became superintendent three years ago, we actually had two regional directors plus, plus a regional director of curriculum. We changed that model primarily because the regional director model wasn't very efficient because the, the regions in our district don't really lend themselves very well for efficiency. So in some other districts where they have regional directors, they might have, you know, three elementary schools that feed into one middle school, that feeds into one high school, and you can create a region or a smaller district within a district. But we really don't have that because our boundaries cross over so much and because we have so many students in our K-eight feeder schools in the rural areas. So we don't really have really nice feeder patterns in our district. So the regional director model didn't, didn't really make a lot of sense efficiency-wise. So when we initially did the restructuring at that particular point in time, my, my goal was to go away from the regional directors and create an assistant superintendent for, for the district. And, and we've done that, and Mr. Lodge has done a great job. But unfortunately, it's just too much for one person's plate. The position has grown to be too large for just one person. Primarily, what we're seeing in the last couple of years is with the increase of students at the high school level, it, it is taxing both Mr. Lodge and myself just to provide enough support for the various schools and, and the various needs. So this, this new organizational chart references an additional assistant superintendent that would focus on nine twelve. And just to kind of give you an idea of, of the type of work that, that needs to be done at that level, one of the things that I think is important is, is outreach to our K-eight feeder schools. I believe that having, you know, one person that our, that our K-eight feeder schools could communicate with would, would help that, just that transition between some of our K-eight feeder schools and, and our high school district. One of the other things that we have a big focus on, and Mr. Lodge does a great job at this, but his time is pretty limited, is that eighth to ninth grade transition, which is a big transition for our students. And having somebody sort of spearhead that and be in charge of that is, is important to me. There's also just a, a variety of extra programs that have come with the nine twelve district, the, the M O A and, and what that looks like going forward, the online academy. We also do quite a bit of work with the Montana Digital Academy, which provides supplemental coursework for our students in high school. Those are the types of things that we really need a coordinator to the district level to make sure we're doing some of that efficiently. And then one of the other ones that, that creeps up on us quite a bit is anything that comes through the Montana High School Association. We don't really have a coordinator for the district that works directly with the Montana High School Association. We have individuals from each of our buildings that work separately with the high school association, but we, we really need a district coordinator. And, and a perfect example, at their annual meeting last week, the high school association passed the permission to allow baseball and, and we're excited about that. But quite, quite honestly, you can't just add a sport in a district our size without a lot of coordination. So we don't really have anybody to do that. Each high school has an activities coordinator, but they focus on what's happening at their school rather than what happens at the district level. And if you're going to add an entire sport like that, you, you need some coordination. It's likely going to mean like a, a committee of folks, both student athletes and parents and coaches. And, and we just need somebody to coordinate some of that work. So this stuff comes up periodically and not to say that Mr. Lodge isn't capable of doing that, it's just that he's spread so thin that it's hard for him to focus his attention in any one area because he, he has to support so many schools. So one of the things I know that we want to be really cautious about is, is paying for these positions. I know an activities director was approved by the board many, many years ago, but we really had no way to fund it, so it was never added. This particular position, I, I, I believe that would be cost-neutral. We have some central office positions that, that I've reduced in the last couple of years. And so we've got some cost savings in central office that I believe would cover the cost of this, this new position. And so this is just, as I said before, a draft and then we'll, we'll be talking to our constituents and my advisory groups over the next few, few weeks, just to get some more feedback. There's one more position on here that I'm going to speak briefly about, and I think Pat would want to share a few things as well. There's a new position that we're recommending in the area of workers' comp. And this is not necessarily an administrative position, but more of a coordinator position. So a little bit less salary than an administrative salary. But basically, every single year or, or month, we have to pay premiums to workmen's comp. And the more workplace safety issues that you have, then your premiums go up. It's just like any other sort of insurance, just like your car insurance, you know, if you get in too many wrecks, then your car insurance goes up. Same thing with this, we pay a premium for our workmen's comp. And if we have workplace safety issues, then that premium continues to go up and up year after year. Many years ago, we had a pretty good workers' comp premium, which meant that we were keeping our workplace safety issues down. But recently, it's crept back up again and, and it's become pretty expensive. And that's because we haven't really had a focus, we haven't had one person that's really helped focus energies on workplace safety. So this particular position is new, but we feel like if we can get the premium down, it would pay for itself. And that's what happened many, many years ago when the district focused on workplace safety, the premium came down and we were able to cover the cost of that position based on the savings and premium. Plus, plus more than that, we actually saved more than just the cost of the position. We were able to use that money and recuperate it for some other general fund purposes. So this is an important position to me because workplace safety is important to us. But also, there's, there's money to be had there that we can use in other areas if we can get that premium cost down. So Pat, would you like to say anything about that position?
Sure, and that, that's really well, well said. And, and I guess I would just point out that the, the position, as, as Rob mentioned, was a standalone position going back to two thousand and four, two thousand and five. And, and looking back at our lost history, when that position was focused on that effort, we, we did well. And, and it's, it's not really a, you, you realize the benefit one year after the, the effort is put in place. It, it takes time because our, our work, work comp carriers look at a, a history going back five years. And it's, and so you, you need to start working on the safety and the, the claims so that your next five-year history is, is better. And one of the measuring sticks is this experience modification factor. And, and, and ours right now is one point four, and, and you want to be at, at one. And, and one means that your losses compared to similarly situated districts is, is right where it needs to be. And, and so we're at one point four, which means our losses compared to similarly situated districts is, is one point four times higher. And how that translates for us is that the premium with a one point oh experience rating, it would be where we would start and then we would multiply it by one point four to get our premium. So as, as Superintendent Watson said, it's, it's significant in terms of the, the increase in premium and the, the ability to, to create resources, both to cover this position, but also to support safety efforts. It is right available to us within the, the dollars that we're expending right now on, on premium. Cat, for to answer any questions?
Okay, are there any trustee questions for Pat or Rob? There we go, trustee Walker Andrews?
Yeah, I was wondering what workman comp covers. I mean, is it mostly physical safety? I mean, I'm hoping the pandemic isn't part of workman's comp at this point because it seems like every school would be in trouble if that were the case.
It, it's workplace safety, so it's employees. So we, all of our employees and our volunteers are covered, are covered under our workers' compensation plan. So it covers injuries that are related to their, their work. So it's a, it, and for us, the rating is, is by group. So we have certain groups of employees that are rated higher because of their position. And, and that's, that's where the focus is in terms of safety, is on those positions where there's lifting and turning issues or where there's, there, there's other risks that are associated with their job. And so you mitigate those risks as best you can through efforts from a safety standpoint. And that can be through, through equipment and through gear, it can be through training, and, and a lot of it is through training.
Okay, trustee Mercer, do you have a question?
Comment, comment, okay.
Comments, okay, I need to, or you to Pat or Rob?
So, on the workers' comp coordinator.
So on the workers' comp coordinator, I get where it's coming from and for Sheldon money, all that. But workers' comp is people injured, right? And so just at a sort of focus level, safety coordinator is more about the people than about the money. Just a thought. As to the assistant superintendent, I think I really support this in that I've encountered several things through parents where once Mr. Lodge got involved, I think they wrapped up, but it took a long time to get escalated to him. So I think if there was another of him, it would help some customer service at the high school level.
Okay, any other board question or comment? Trustee Decker?
Thanks. This is a about the organizational chart, too. And a question about what the kind of practicality would be. I'm noticing the kind of box that's created between the assistant superintendent for K eight, assistant superintendent for nine twelve, and then a bunch of those specialty administrative positions. And that all of those positions are now going to be really working closely with both of the assistant superintendents in that way. And whether whether I don't know if it's a question or a comment really, but just what the vision might be for making sure that those folks are now not in twice as many meetings to to deal with their specialty with both of the different superintendents. So just me. And then the other question, too, being whether whether this is something that's an urgent need to do or whether it's something that when our temporary positions, like the COVID coordinator position sunsets and we don't need someone in that position anymore, and we certainly all hope to look forward to when that would be true. If that would be the timing for for this. And my one last thing, sorry, and now it's three things. It took me a long time looking at the list of projects that each of the folks is involved with to find Jefferson and early K. And I wonder if someday we could call those folks the assistant superintendent for pre K eight.
Yeah, we we would likely put Jefferson and pre K under that assistant superintendent. That that would make a lot of sense. Under that assistant superintendent, you see where it says K eight principals, we would we would put it there.
Whether we whether we could simply just put the word pre in front of the K. Yeah, so it's these are pre K eight.
Yeah, yeah, that that makes sense. You you bring up a good point about coordination. One thing that's worked really effectively and quite honestly, it's it's come through COVID is the just the the intense coordination that we need to do at the district level just to provide support for our schools. So we're in the habit now of 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 meeting more frequently as a team. And if we if we move to this model, we would have to keep doing that. Because what I don't want to do, for example, the special education director, obviously, we have special education kids at at pre K eight and we have and we have special education kids at high school. And I don't want her to have to be in multiple meetings. So the more often that we can meet with her together and she can get things resolved and we can get things resolved as a team. So it's a lot more coordination between us as a team, which which I think we can do. In fact, we've been forced to do that with COVID and and it's been it's been more effective the more we coordinate. Regarding, and there was one other question, and I think it was regarding, oh, the temporary positions. We, one of the things that that our COVID director is doing is a lot of student support in terms of and trustee Hovins knows this in terms of, you know, suicide prevention, behavior intervention. And so some of those things, once the COVID director is no longer in in that we don't have that position anymore, some of those things are going to have to meld into these other positions. So you're you're right. I mean, we we could probably wait until we don't have that anymore. But at the same time, I'm going to start moving some of that stuff sooner rather than later because we won't have we won't have a COVID director forever.
Trustee McDonald?
Yeah, I want to kind of go back to where Rob, you had mentioned that you had eliminated or kind of eliminated some of some different positions that would be able to compensate, you think, for the added salary of these two positions. My question is, is that let's just say that that money that, you know, that we're kind of looking at allocating towards that. If that doesn't cover the wages or the salary, then where that where's the money going to come from to cover the salaries?
Yeah, so and and I should be clear, we haven't eliminated anything, but we have reduced some of the positions and assigned some of the duties to other folks. So we had a full time position that I that's now a part time position. We assign some of those duties to other folks. But I can save a little bit on that position because we didn't replace that part time position. We we have enough fine funding in those positions to fully cover this salary. So when I said it would be budget neutral, it's because I I believe we have enough money in those position savings to cover this new position.
Okay, do we have any other trustee questions or comments? Trustee Agaros?
A quick question, Rob. Why are why is arts education under the Director of Human Resources?
Yeah, it's a good question. You know, I I'll just say this. And in all of these boxes, I always believe that everyone should have support of a supervisor. And so the reason it was placed there is because we had too many people reporting to the assistant superintendent. And and so it it just the assistant superintendent wasn't able to support all of those people reporting to him. And so I had moved the arts education over to Dave Roth, just so that we had somebody else that could support arts education. That could go back, but currently, that's where it sits.
We have any other trustee questions or comments? Trustee Walker Andrews, is your hand up? Okay. Oh, never mind. That's my mouse. Okay, I think that's it. And I think, Rob, we take public comment on this item, don't we?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're open for public comment. Paul, do you want to manage that?
Sure. At this time, there are no hands raised.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that, Rob. And I will talk about that in our three on one meetings as well, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, that's our final item under new business. And then we go into personnel negotiations and policy. The one is to approve the personnel report, which is on page fifty one of your packet. We typically don't discuss this unless you have a real general question that's not related to the individual. Are there any questions about the personnel report? I'm seeing none. Do we have a motion from an elementary trustee to approve the elementary personnel report? Okay, trustee Agaros, second by trustee Old Person. Do we don't take public comment, right, Rob?
It's an action item, so you do have to ask for public comment, but it's not. It has to be pretty general if anyone had comment.
Okay. And I don't see any public comment. So all elementary trustees in favor of approving the personnel report, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to elementary trustees. The next is the same for the secondary trustee, and that's a full board vote. Do we have any questions or comments from trustees? Seeing none, do we have any public comment?
No public comment.
Okay, all trustees in favor of approving the secondary personnel report, please signify by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as all trustees present, which is all trustees, I believe. So the second personnel item is to address the to approve the cooperative sponsorship for wrestling. Mr. Lodge?
Good evening, everybody. Big Sky and Loyola have already had a relationship on the boys' side of wrestling. It's been very successful partnership for those two schools. But we haven't caught up with the girls' side of wrestling since girls' wrestling was initiated. So we we are asking that you approve this tonight. So again, Big Sky and Loyola can form a team on the girl's side and be totally official with the the Montana High School Association. And that's about it. It's a good relationship.
Do you have any questions for Russ? A trustee Mercer?
It's a weird cynical question, but the alternative is if they joined us, we'd get paid like an eighth of a student, right? Because anyone that comes in and is in our sports, we get paid A and B for. So how does that? I guess that's my my question, but this isn't. What's that?
That is cynical.
That is cynical.
I'm going to defer to Dr. Watson on that one.
Yeah, trustee Mercer, I don't know if anybody's asked that question, so we'll have to ask M H S A that question. That's a that's a good point because they could come in as a as a private school student. I think that I think the co-op allows them. Yeah, I don't know. That's a great question.
Does the co-op give them their name, though? They're still wrestling as Loyola?
Yes, they are still wrestling as Loyola. Maybe that's what it is. But yeah, that's a great question.
Okay, are there any other trustee questions on this item? Okay, do we have a motion from a full board trustee to approve the cooperative sponsorship agreement with Loyola Sacred Heart High School for Wrestling, moved by trustee Gale? Second by trustee Hovins? Any more board discussion? Do we have any public? Oops, go ahead. Trustee Walker Andrews? You're muted.
I was just wondering if we really wanted to vote on it, given Mr. Mercer's question or whether we needed more information or if you're just making a comment. That was all.
He's being a mercenary.
The M H S A really needs our board to vote this through tonight. So a young lady, a female athlete at Loyola can wrestle officially. And they're kind of waiting for this vote tonight. So we take away all doubt about the qualifications to wrestle officially as a high school athlete. So I think we're going to be okay with Mr. Mercer's question. We'll figure it out. But I would like to see you go forward tonight, if possible.
Okay, trustee Decker?
By this cooperative agreement, any student from another school or whatever would would be subject to our our policies as far as participating on the team and all of that kind of stuff.
You are correct.
Any other board questions or comments? Seeing none, do we have any public comment?
No public comments at this time.
Okay, all trustees in favor of approving the recommendation, please signify by raising your hand. That is unanimous and as all trustees present. And that concludes our agenda. So we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.